You could change someone's life and help us get closer to a cure.
Swedish area.
Okay, today is Tuesday, September 24th. Look at that, 24th, 2024.
You're very good at reading.
That's why he runs the town.
Look at that, 24th, 24th.
That's why you're the mayor.
That's impressive, isn't it?
Look, up ahead, up ahead.
I cause me an order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bush.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Jerich.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Prochnow.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
All board members are present tonight. Next, we have the invocation from Pastor Nogada and the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise. Pastor, if you want to come down, please.
Let's pray. We come before you today, God, to acknowledge your blessings on our lives. We thank you for all that you have done and how you've provided for us. Ultimately, we thank you for who you are. God, we pray that you would grant us wisdom and guidance to raise our families, to lead and serve others, and to work together for the well-being of our community. May our discussions tonight be filled with mutual respect and understanding and compassion. God, I pray that you would help us set aside any of our self-interests or personal agendas, but that we would make every decision in such a way that it would reflect your justice and mercy and a deep commitment to serving one another. God, I ask for your blessings on our town and its residents. I pray for our mayor, for our board members, and for all of those who are involved in serving this town. God, we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Flags to my right. My Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Please, you see the pastor, thank you. Pastor helped us out tonight, so we appreciate that going in.
Yes, because there was a lucky spot there.
How's everything going? The congregation doing well? Ready for fall and moving on from the summer? This weekend felt like summer. So, as always, thank you for everything. And thank you for your service to this community. Make Elk Grove a better place. Appreciate it. Thanks again.
1993.
Okay, move on now to the pool of the minutes of September 10th, 2024.
I move that we approve the minutes of September 10th, 2024, as presented and dispensed with the reading. Second?
Remoted by trustee Prochnow, second by trustee Miller. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show, unanimous approval. See that, George? There is September 10th, so that's 10:24, see there? Doesn't mean anything, I just thought you were...
You're very, you're very observant.
Okay, I'm tired of talking to you now. Move on, mayors and trustees, report. Not many items tonight, Mr. Frankie.
The crowd loves you.
First off, I'll talk about just one part of the Frankie Fest, the parade. It was hot out there, no question, but it still went very well. Everything went good. Trustee Bush's students from Elk Grove High School came through. As always, we appreciate them volunteering to help out the community and do a thing. And this gives me a chance, too, to talk about Mr. Rowan's staff. You know, this is kind of our last of our summer kind of events and all that. And we do a lot. And we do concerts, we do a play party picnic, we do Memorial Day, we do a Frankie Fest. I mean, we have a lot going on. I gotta tell you, and department heads, too, your staff is phenomenal. The people of this village are second to none. How they handle things, do things. Call me the Public Works guys. I mean, they built that waterfall float. I mean, that's just a little thing, but all the other stuff, hot out there. I was watching them Saturday night, taking the bags of garbage, moving things around. They never stop, they're always smiling, they're... I saw appointed people helping. Great job. Chief Michael, our fire guys, always around, ready. I mean, never worry about if anyone gets overheated or anything, you guys are set to go. Obviously, Chief Doran, we back the blue a million percent. You guys always come through and thank... And Matt, all the other people from finance, engineer, everyone. Our staff, I say this all the time, I'm gonna say it again, we got the best staff bar none. I hear compliments from people that come from out of town to our events, like this past weekend and stuff. They all say, "My God, your people are always there, so attentive, they're on top, they're thankful, they're smiling, they're nice." Please, pass on to everyone. Thank you. That, when we talk about how great Elk Grove is doing, that's the main reason. Is we've got the people that do the job to help people, and they do it because they actually care. They don't do it for the job, they do it because they enjoy doing it. And that speaks volumes. So, thank you. It's the end of the year, a lot of events going on, and I know we got tree lighting, but that's a few months away. Thank you. That's what makes Elk Grove good. That's why you see the commercial, we're number one. There's reason we're number one. And you let your staff, fellow staffers, know that's why we're number one. And we thank you. On behalf of the whole board, we say thank you, and actually, behalf of the whole community, thank you and appreciate it. And next summer will be here before you know it. Hi, Matthew. Okay. Also, I know a lot of people have been reaching out to us, talking to us, especially over on the west side. There's that abandoned car wash at the corner of Devon and Nergi. That's privately owned. We've talked with the owner and all that. That will be torn down before the end of the year. And we regrade it, and by spring, new grass seeds will be put in, and that's a lot to be finished and waiting for hopefully new development in the near future. But I know we hear from different people, whether they call us, talk to us at a coffee with the board, talk to us other places, that's being taken care of, just getting updated. Last two items, good news, good news. I'm not sure if my cardiologist will be happy with me, but yes, Popeyes Construction has started. So, I know what people have been asking for two and a half years. Popeyes is under construction by the town center in front of Planet Fitness between them and 7-Eleven. It is under construction, it will be coming. So, Mr. Knickerbocker, you and I gotta get an extra defibrillator to keep us going, but they do have the best chicken sandwich bar none. So, we're excited about that. And the other construction project started and does not include Whoopi Goldberg. The View is under construction at the corner of Higgins and Aron Knight's Road. Long awaited, new development has started, they're working on it, and it won't be long till the new retail be built. Jerich, Tanzuki, Vincent's Bike Shop, then these pizza and all that be moving to a new place, then a new apartment building be built. So, it's on, finally under construction. We're excited about it and looking forward to it. And believe it or not, Mr. Frankie, I gotta do one swearing in, that will be it.
That's the best part, the swearing in.
Is it a Festivus miracle?
It's not over yet, let's just say.
You know I say it's a Festivus miracle?
Celebrate this young man and...
That'd be good.
Come and sit down and let us do the rest.
You know I say Festivus?
Because it's for the rest of us.
Guess what was on the other night?
It was on, um...
Not in Seinfeld. Christmas Vacation was on TV. A rerun, of course, I didn't watch it.
Well, it always plays this time of year.
You realize why it's so important. You know what tomorrow is?
Wednesday?
Three months from tomorrow is Christmas Day.
Look at the numbers he has today, this is unbelievable.
This brain is working today. Okay, Chief Michael, we got it.
One day a week. On Tuesdays.
Can you tell I'm in a good mood? I had my annual physical today and doctor gave me a thumbs up, so I'm in good mood today. A thumbs up, George, not what you're thinking. All of us guys know that.
You want a chocolate?
So, chief, all yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and the members of the board, thanks very much for here to welcome a new firefighter. Each time we do this, we are really grateful for the support we get to make this possible through the work of the Village Board and the mayor, and also the Police and Fire Commission to keep our staffing where it needs to be. So, we are greatly appreciative of that, so thank you. This is Eric Nokon, and Eric grew up in the Dunning neighborhood of Chicago. It's an area that was settled by Swedish, German, and Polish immigrants in the mid to late 1800s on the northwest side of the city, kind of in the area of Harlem and Irving. Currently, he lives in Mount Prospect. We're gonna try and get him to move to Elk Grove, but he moves along here. Being raised in a Polish immigrant household, Eric is fluent in speaking Polish, which is very good for this community based on the Polish population we have and the number of people who are speaking Polish in our neighborhood, so that's most welcome. He graduated from the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign with a bachelor's degree in sociology and a minor in criminology, law, and society. He attended Northwest Communities Hospital's paramedic program and graduated from there in June of 2023. He likes to spend his free time with his fiancee and their dogs, spending time outdoors, golfing, reading, and watching movies. So, please join me in saying gratulatio and miley pejonia to Eric Nokon and his family. Welcome and congratulations. Welcome to the Elk Grove Village Fire Department.
Swedish area. Well, you know, Johnson, Swedish. My name is actually Yo Hansen, one of my relatives came over, as Swedish as can be, so that's good. Welcome. All these people are for you? This is, would you say this is probably the biggest contingency we've ever had?
Absolutely.
I commend you, thank you.
How much they cost?
I gotta make sure you have a lot more chocolates, we'll get you taken care of. Well, let's get it officially done first. Eric, step up, raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Eric Nokon.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do soundly swear.
Do soundly swear.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge?
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. We obviously know you are a fine line. What high school did you go to in Chicago?
Hershey.
Hershey?
Yeah.
Out here? Okay.
Husky, right?
Hershey?
I knew that.
Well, wait a minute, don't give George hell.
He knows.
This is for lunches.
One of my wife's... Lot of Hershey's.
What grade school did you go to?
Grade school, I did River Trails.
River Trails, you gotta get to a grade school for lunch. It's River Trails, George.
Pardon me?
River Trails.
Actually, well, sorry.
Oh, I spoke there once.
Grade school was Chicago Academy.
Oh, Chicago Academy, my bad.
Squirrels.
Squirrels, what did you think, George?
Ah, I know.
This is Gibson's for lunch, go ahead.
How long do I have?
Not long.
Okay, I don't know.
I don't know, were they, I don't know?
Dolphins.
Dolphins, you're close. Okay. So, Eric, come on up now. What made you want to be a firefighter?
I wanted to do a job that, you know, helps people. I didn't want a regular office job, I didn't want a nine to five, I wanted something that put me out there, that had me interacting with the community, helping the community. And firefighting EMS is something that had a calling to me ever since I was very young. I pursued it, I got where I am, and I'm very happy to be here.
That's great. So, you're Hershey Husky?
I am.
Now, you know Hershey was always the rivalry to Elk Grove until Conan came along. But until then, we used to barely in the Super Bowl and football and all the rest. Now, what sports you play in Hershey?
I did not play any sports.
Okay, then you're still okay. As long as you say basketball, because our rival was wrestling, so. Who do you got here tonight, Andrew, so your family?
Yeah, so I've got my grandparents here, I've got my parents, that's my brother and his girlfriend. Behind my brother is my fiancee, and those are my fiancee's family, that's her mom, her brother, her grandmother, and then back over there, I got some friends. I've got Alex, Ty, David, and Ian, and that's all the Station Seven guys back there.
Well, that is great. You, I'm serious, the biggest crowd we've ever had by far. So, anybody in firefighting in your family now?
No.
So, you're the first firefighter?
I'm the first one.
It's nice, you're starting a new trend, because usually we see family tradition. My father, my uncle, something like that, so, well, we're glad you did it, we're glad you picked it. What made you pick Elk Grove? You could have probably gone to other departments, all that, what made you pick Elk Grove?
Elk Grove is a fantastic community. Every time you drive through, it's very well taken care of, everyone's kind to each other, you go to Jewel, everyone smiles, you know, you can seat bump bump into people, and it's always very, you know, very loose, very kind of nice and pleasant. It's a great hospital here, too, Lexin Brothers, fantastic. It's a great, you know, fire department, heard fantastic things about it, and this is the place to be.
Now, wait, 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 you keep going, why else is this a great town?
Uh, the mayor is fantastic.
There you go. The new chief, so we're good. Well, take your hat off. Since there's so much family here. Hang on, we fit more in here. With all this family, we're gonna make sure everyone gets... Our tradition is, we have our chocolate logos, village logo on it, dark chocolate. That way, my cardiologist lets me eat it, so I'm gonna make sure there's more than enough. Now, so who's the head patriarch of the family here today? Who's the boss of the family? No, seriously?
I'd say the matriarch.
Matriarch?
Yeah.
Okay. Tradition is, mom then takes everyone to Dairy Queen, which is still open, right there on Devon, because she's been a good little boy for you, he's still your little boy. So, we always tell them, take the kids to Dairy Queen, they've been good at the village. So, make sure you take care of them, okay? Now, as a rookie, don't figure you gotta take care of those guys back there, too, so...
Absolutely.
There's a few extra, you take care of your brothers.
Absolutely.
And you'll be good to go.
I'll be good to go.
Okay? Now, do some jumping jacks while holding that, and you'll be set to... Thank you, Eric. Congratulations on that. If you folks want to get going now, you don't need to stay for the whole meeting, you're fine. Dairy Queen's still open, go ahead.
It was good. Can we all be that way?
Mayor, with the new pill, can we start calling some milk chocolate, too?
Yeah, we should.
You can eat whatever you want.
That's right.
Little Caesar.
He's always thinking.
Is he a smart guy, is he?
As long as it's food, yeah.
Were you at the least, were you at the least? No, no. What he talked about today, shooting the cats or shot... I like that. Cat, dog?
Well, whatever.
Joe, they eat them both, what's the difference? Okay, they're all gone? Okay, move on now, trustees' report. I'll start down here, trustee Jerich.
I just want to say that the parade was fantastic, great organization, and all the floats and entries were great, but I have to say the trustees' float. Niagara Falls was awesome, thank you, Public Works. That concludes my report.
So, you thought the parade was great?
I did.
So, that committee must have the best chairman in the world, be that well...
You know, that's gotta be it. That's the only way.
Must be, I know, it's something... Okay, trustee Schmidt.
I will also say that I loved the parade, it was great. And also, several weeks ago, we went to a ribbon cutting ceremony at the Wingstop, and I just wanted to let the people who were there, I went back and I had the garlic Parmesan wings later, they were delicious. That concludes my report.
You know, I could make a joke about what's a policeman's favorite food now, but I won't.
No, no, no.
Trustee Prochnow.
Thank you. I also attended the Wingstop ribbon cutting ceremony on September 12th with the mayor and trustee Schmidt. And I have to say, we got to sample some of their... seasoned fries and their wings. I've never had a chicken wing in my life, so this was an experience for me. Very interesting. And they had 14 different wing options, so we only sampled three or four of them. I'm sure that you wing lovers would just love this place, so please give them some of your business. And then on Saturday, September 14th, I represented the village at the Elk Grove Township Safety Town ribbon cutting ceremony. They're located in the new township building on Lam Meyer Road. Those of you old timers that go back can remember, we had the Safety Town at the old township building on Arlington Heights Road. And I remember my children going as a field trip, and it was a big, it was a big thing for them back then to go to Safety Town. It was one of their field trips. And my kids are in their 40s now, and they still remember it. And you'd go to Safety Town and you'd ride your bike around on the course and learn safety rules. And then there was one particular bench where there was a gentleman sitting, and if he talked to you, you weren't supposed to look at him because he was stranger danger. And my kids still laugh about it and talk about it today, so I hope a new generation of children will get to experience that at the new Safety Town. Also, let's remember the farmer's market runs through the end of October. October 5th is a special event. It's the pet parade with trophies for every pet that participates. And on Saturday, October 12th, is the Halloween Parade for the children, also with trophies for every child that participates. So bring your, bring your pets on the 5th, bring your children on the 12th, and let's, let's give farmer's market a boost. And last but not least, on September 21st, I was honored to be chosen to serve as the grand marshal for the hometown parade. Getting a little emotional, but I thank the mayor, I thank the board, I thank the parade committee for selecting me and honoring me. It was an awesome experience. I got to wear my tiara. I got to ride in a carriage 10 feet above the ground once they finally got me hoisted up there. And the parade was beautiful. It was a wonderful day, and it's an experience I'll always enjoy and remember. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Prochnow. And it's funny to talk about stranger danger. You know who stranger danger was all the time, don't you?
No.
Yeah.
George, I never knew.
All the time. And the best thing was, he didn't have to act. He just sat there and said, George, be yourself. And it worked.
Stranger danger.
Now, a little quick history. You know how to build the original?
The park districts, or you?
The park districts. Guess who worked for the park to when it was built?
You.
Me. We had to take the sod cutters, and the deal was, we could, all the sod we cut out for the road and everything, we could use, we need sod in the parks. So we did, we took the sod from there and put them on different park things, and then we brought over and helped with the houses and all. Oh, yeah.
Isn't it wonderful how the different park districts in the, in the village and the township, everybody works together to make this place, our community, a better place, even back then?
I was always so sad when they just closed it down, weren't using, and let the trees grow in the houses, and it was a lot of fun, but yeah.
You'll have to come see the new one. It's pretty nice.
I got to. So thank you for being there. And I hear you taking on Saturday when I can't go. You and Kathy.
We'll be at the Kennedy Young.
Thank you. Okay. Excuse me, stranger danger. Trustee Frankie?
I've been sitting next to him all this time. I didn't know. Hey. Well, you stole my thunder as you usually do, because I wanted to thank everybody for Oktoberfest. I almost said Frankie, but Oktoberfest. All our staff, Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, especially the mayor's office, all the volunteers that put in so much time and made everything run so smoothly. So I have to thank everybody immensely. It was another great year. We had as many people as last year. We had great weather. Everybody had a great time, especially the kids, too. So thank you again, all our employees. And I also want to thank the Rotary. Rotary's volunteered, all this, their people, to sell the beer, get it set up, to get going, all that. They take a lot of time to get this set up, so I want to thank everyone in Rotary that was involved. We couldn't have done it without you. So again, another successful year, so thank you all very much.
And you made it into a real family fest. Saturday is family Oktoberfest, and no town does that.
No.
What you got done with the kids?
I mean, we all, we get that credit, but it's our people that do such a great job. And it is, it, I mean, I look at it every year, and I just see the kids and the parents and everybody just going around having a great time. It's what it's all about, so it's worth it.
George's prom date was there on Saturday. She had a little green tint on her face, but she was there, and she looked good still.
I think she had a bad bratwurst.
Very excellent. Trustee Miller.
So trustee Prochnow, congratulations on being grand marshal. I unfortunately had, well, fortunately and unfortunately, had a family obligation, so I was not able to attend. But I did see you on the replay of EGTV, and you looked very good up there with the six horses drawing your big wagon. And I know it was hot because I could see that from the TV, but you all were very cool, so that was great.
Thank you, trustee Miller.
And I wanted to say to Chief Dorn, I think we have a new officer, don't we? Don't we have a new K-9?
Yes.
Congratulations on your new K-9 Knox. I'm excited to, to see him.
Does he have to get sworn in here?
No.
Yeah, does he get sworn in?
Matt tried. It didn't go too well.
I was gonna, I was just gonna ask that. Do we, do we swear him in? That's exciting. So now we have two K-9 officers. That's awesome. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Last but not least, probably the most intelligent human being I have ever met in my life, trustee Bush.
You should meet a few more people in your life.
Live a sheltered life.
Yeah. I want to thank the students at Elk Grove High School for carrying the balloon. We had a floppy wing towards the second half of the parade, and they managed to hold it up the best they could. Also, the students pairing with Rotary for the denim drive. We got over 450 pieces of denim, which are sent to Arizona to be recycled, so thank for everyone in the community that came out and did that. Couple upcoming events. Elk Grove High School's got their annual cereal bowl versus Rolling Meadows, where we're going to try to collect together about 2,500 boxes of cereal. Hopefully, we can get to that number this year. So the official date, or the end date, is October 25th, but you'll be hearing more about that and seeing advertisements. And that concludes my report.
Would you say, no, you're gonna have a challenge this year. The gentleman that's on the township board now, I think he's running for supervisor, in April, his son goes to Rolling Meadows. And he said, with new coach Gould, they're really putting an effort on to beat Elk Grove after all these years.
That's right.
They're pushing hard to, so get the kids fired up to get it done.
Yeah. Videos are getting made, so you'll see those things coming soon.
When else cereal have to be in by?
October 25th.
So what do they do if they got boxes of cereal? Where do they bring them to?
So they can bring them to Elk Grove High School, and we'll take them then over to the township. Or if you go to the game at Rolling Meadows, you can bring cereal, and the truck will be there, and you can just say, these are to be counted for Elk Grove High School.
Are you worried?
Little bit. Little bit. It's the first year I've been worried. Yeah. You know, he can go in those deep NFL pockets and just, you know, buy 100,000 boxes of cereal.
Well, we may have to see if we can help out. Anyone watching tonight, if you want to help. First off, the cereal goes to a good cause.
Right. Yeah, for the township, when we started doing this, I think they were serving, you know, 150 families, and now it's over 500 families every month that they're serving. And cereal's a, a big thing. It's staple. Everyone eats it. And then if you, you know, if you have the cereal, the food pantry can spend more money on vegetables and meat and things like that. So it's a, it's a great cause. Whoever gets the most cereal, you know, and it's a fun little competition, but ultimately, 2,000 or 3,000 boxes of cereal go to, goes for a good cause.
Is that what you usually gather, about 2,000 to 3,000 boxes?
Yeah, last, last year, we were, I think Elk Grove had 1,700, and Rolling Meadows had like 1,100, so 2,800 boxes of cereal.
So 1,700. And...
If we hit 2,000, I think we can beat Meadows.
You give 2,000, you'll beat Meadows?
Yeah.
Could I add something here, too?
Sure.
Just to note that the Elk Grove Township pantry serves our, not just our community, but the surrounding communities that belong to Elk Grove Township. And over the past year, we lost our Elk Grove food pantry due to, due to the location being sold. So this is the only food pantry that services our needs in the community. So please, give it a thought to give a little bit extra to them this year and help them out, because Joe is right. The amount of people using it has increased dramatically. So please consider that. Thank you.
And if you can, bring a box of cereal over to Elk Grove High School. Just go up to the main office, front door, turn in. Our goal is to get over 2,000 boxes. That's our goal. Okay. And just so everyone knows, in our next meeting or meeting after, we got a special financial donation coming in for the Elk Grove Township food pantry. So we'll do that presentation at the board meeting. So, okay, so our goal is 2,000 boxes. Okay. See what happens.
We can do better.
Anything else? Okay. Next, we move on to accounts payable warrant for September 24th, 2024.
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for September 24th, 2024, in the amount of $437,437.89.
Second?
Motion by trustee Prochnow, second by trustee Bush. Look at that, 437, 437. What the original phone number? That was it? But what is, what was the call back then?
HE7.
Yep. What does HE stand for?
Hempstead.
You got it. Very good. Hempstead 7.
872270 was my number.
And then Hempstead 7.
Was it Jenny?
Hempstead.
That was, that was when we were on the party line.
You want to hear something sad? Yes, we did, too. Sad? The number for my business is still the original number my parents had from January 1958.
030.
030.
They just said it's valid, too, and it went right to it, because it's old.
I thought we just said, hey, naval.
No, you said, Mabel, Mabel, oh, get all the George Johnson.
We did start with party lines in Elk Grove.
Yes. Us and the Goggins families, and we knew on Sunday afternoons not to go on, because Mrs. Goggins talked to her mom, who was out east somewhere, and we couldn't go on for like 2 to 4 o'clock. He just did it.
Yeah.
So all these young people going, what the hell are they talking about? Okay. Consider agenda. Today, we have items A is in Almighty, J is in Johnson.
Mayor, have we taken a roll on the warrant?
Yeah.
The accounts payable.
Do we really want to pay it? Okay, take the roll.
You're reflected as previous?
Good call.
Thank you, Lori.
Wow, good call.
You don't have to hear the A through J again.
No, I just say A through J. Good, that's good. Go ahead, Lori.
You said previous.
She calls roll.
Oh, but she said taking as previous. Did you want to call, call?
We haven't taken an official roll call vote yet.
Thought we did.
No, all we did was, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Yeah, usually we...
We gotta do a roll call.
Usually we do two of these, that's why.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Well, anybody watching me tonight's morning, what the heck's going on? Motion approves 6 to nothing.
Kansas Johnson, though.
Now we go through, consider agenda items A is in Almighty, through J is in Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Humble.
Care of motion.
So moved.
Second?
We have motion by trustee Frankie, a second by trustee Miller.
Trustee Frankie has a clock comment.
I'd like to abstain from item number I.
I wondered.
Yeah. Oh, it's not concern agenda. Okay.
Is it a gulu?
Oh, okay, that's to raise the retired fire chief's salary by immense, okay. Okay, let's do it again. We'll amend the original motion. A is in Almighty through J is in Johnson to exclude item I. Trustee Frankie agree?
So moved.
Trustee Miller agree?
Second.
Okay. Lori, call the roll, please.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Motion passes, or 6 to nothing. Now we do consider agenda item I that we remove from A is in Almighty through J is in Johnson, and vote on that individually. So I did a motion.
Second?
We have motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Miller, for item I that was removed from A is in Almighty through J is in Johnson. Lori, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Abstain.
Okay, so item I, that was moved from, consider agenda A is in Almighty through J is in Johnson.
Can I vote, too?
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Yeah, we're done. So move that, passes 5, so order 1.
I was in the water today.
Okay, we now move on to, no items regular agenda? Holy cow, plant commission, A through...
Wrong agenda.
All right.
Aye.
I only have one item tonight. And plant commission, it is on September 9th, plant commission met here PC dock at 24-3 to consider the petition of special use for modifications to a plan unit development by altering the existing site plan for the construction in addition of a new accessory structure on property located at 624 Carroll Square. It was the consensus of the plant commission by a 7-0 vote to approve the petition for special use.
This is, uh, building a, I think, a garage, a separate, detached garage effect. Anybody as petitioner here tonight? Okay, you're fine, sir. Any questions? None. Can I have a motion to have attorney prepare necessary documents?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Bush, second by trustee Schmidt. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the actual national approval. Sir, what happened now is, you'll be on the formal consent agenda next meeting. You do not need to return. You're fine. You may go ahead and start working now if you want to. You don't have to wait for the formal approval, since the plant commission approved it unanimously, the board approved it unanimously, you're good to go. We thank you for working with the plant commission. Thank you for your investment in the community, and we thank you for being part of Elk Grove Village. Thank you, sir. Okay, no items, more items, plant commission?
No items under plant commission. They have one more item under the zoning board of appeals.
Go ahead.
On August 22nd, the zoning board of appeals met here ZBA dock at 24-5, with petitioner seeking a variation from the zoning ordinance as it pertains to permitted locations of offense in residential zoning districts for property located at 699 Chelmsford Lane. It was a consensus of the zoning board of appeals by a 5-2 vote to do grant the requested variation to permit the installation of the fence.
Okay. Petitioner, here? Okay. Actually, you're neighbors. I live right on Smith, a couple doors down from you. You got a nice house, doing a lot of work on it. It's gonna be nice. Thank you for your investment. Trustees, any questions, comments, concerns? If not any motion, I have the attorney prepare necessary documents.
So moved.
Second?
We have motion by trustee Jerish, second by trustee Miller. All in favor, signify by saying aye. We have a motion by trustee Jurisch, second by trustee Miller, all in favor, signature by saying aye.
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 Oppose, we're not concerned that approval. Again, like you folks, you don't have to come back again. We formally adopted in October, but you don't need to return, it's just a mere formality. And we thank you too. I know you're doing a lot of work on your house, it's gonna look good and we appreciate the investment and we thank you for working the zoning board to get done. So again, welcome and neighbor and matter of fact trustee Frankie, just there's one more block away from there. He lives on Brantwood and on Smithwick, so you picked a nice area there. So welcome to Elk Grove and the new place and enjoy. Thank you. Nothing else, or what about the other item, Mr., was that the one we jumped the gun on?
Yeah, that's the one.
That's what I thought, okay. That's right. Okay, so we're all done and on the zoning board. Okay. We move on now to committees and boards report. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Yes, I just want to remind everyone, leaf pickup starts next Monday. It will be every week, we'll come through your neighborhood on different days, look at the schedule on either our website or on the village newsletter that was delivered to you recently. The only thing that'll be different on your pickup day is the week of Thanksgiving possibly. The last day of pickup is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So please put your stuff out the day before and don't block up the curbs, especially now that we're starting to get some rain. So hopefully we'll get a little, it seems like the leaves are just starting to turn and fall, but I'm sure they'll come quickly. So please get your stuff out there, no branches, no grass, just put the leaves out and we'll get them picked up really quick. And that's my report.
With the drought we had, the leaves are gonna come very quickly.
Really, the reds are turning now, the reds always go too early.
So, and I love the idea that they'll go be doing every week, that's great. That, yeah, and it's, it's actually better because you only have so many of these built up. Hopefully drainage will work better, should be a good thing all the way around.
Actually, also just, you know, doing it this way, we really cut down on our overtime because the leaf piles were so big when we did it every other week that it took us so much longer to do it and we had so much more overtime before the old way.
Good move, thank you. I'm sure the guys might not be too happy about that, so. If that one guy ran for president once, they wouldn't have to pay tax on the overtime too, they're gonna really lose. Okay, thank you, anything further?
That's it.
Judiciary Plan and Zoning Committee, trustee Prakno.
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Cable Television Committee, trustee Jurisch.
I just want to remind you that lots of fall sports are being filmed and are available on channel six. And we talked so much about the parade tonight, I encourage you to look at it again. It will, it is available right now on playback and tomorrow night at seven, I believe it'll be played live. And that concludes my report.
Thank you trustee Jurisch. Youth Committee, trustee Bush.
No report, although I am a little worried if we end this one before eight o'clock, same as last time, it might be a sign that the apocalypse is upon us, so we might want to take this at least eight oh one.
You know what, for someone that intelligent, to give you a warning like that, you should heed it. Do you not agree?
That concludes my report.
Information Committee, trustee Miller.
So I have seen a lot of information about scams and especially towards seniors. This Thursday, September twenty-sixth, there will be a free seminar for seniors titled Senior Scams and Financial Abuse. This seminar is going to be hosted at the Elk Grove Library from two to three-thirty PM and our village police department will be teaching how to protect from those scams. So if you are, have had that in, that situation occur and you have a senior friend or a senior parent that you would like them to learn more about senior scams, this would be a great opportunity for them to go to. So again, that's this Thursday, two to three-thirty PM at the, at the library. A couple of reminders, Coffee with a Cop Day, which is Wednesday, October second, at McDonald's on nine forty-seven Meacham from seven to nine AM. And the Fire Department open house, October fifth, from twelve to three PM. And finally, if you're interested in entering the Halloween House Decorating Contest, entries must be received by October sixteenth and that is to lionbarbara@comcast.net. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, think you and I should go to that senior scam thing?
To give evidences, how to do it?
No, make sure you don't get scammed.
Oh.
Not a bad idea. Okay, Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Prakno.
Thank you. Elk Grove Village had their blood drive on Saturday, September fourteenth. Forty units were collected, which translates into saving a hundred and twenty lives. Thank you for doing that. Our next blood drive will be Saturday, December fourteenth, and that concludes my report.
I don't know trustee Bush, I don't have to really drag out some of my reports here.
I just want to be aware of it.
I know, you got me nervous.
Don't walk under any ladders or black cats or anything.
I never walked under a black cat.
You just were saying how smart he was.
He's shown otherwise, he's trying.
Well, remember, you know, the movie Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory, the little, what are they called? Yeah, Oompa Loompas, they might have gone beneath the cat.
They might have, they see that one.
I can see you drawing it on for a few more minutes.
Think about that, just think about it. Personnel Committee, trustee Schmidt, why don't you name every employee that works for the village?
Starting with the letter, hey, here we go, no, no report.
Airport update. Nothing Maggie? Getting nervous. Real nervous, we may have to think of something. Let's talk about that more. Parade update, again, our next meeting won't be till October fourteenth, a wrap-up meeting, but I do thank everyone for the compliments, the parade people work very hard and all that, I mean, think about like, like Fred's gonna, I mean, he's been doing how many years?
Forever.
Thirty, forty years, out there at eight AM all day and hot, so, and other people too.
You know what, we didn't mention CERT, I'm sorry, but CERT did a phenomenal job at the parade and they always do. So all the CERT members, thank you very much.
Great job.
They're fantastic.
Okay, Midsummer Concert Classic Series. Well, we've got so far Paul McCartney, we've got Bon Jovi, we've got Lynyrd Skynyrd and Stevie Nicks.
Ankle Perk.
So that's a hopeful, but never gonna happen, but, oh, we'll work on it.
What about Perry Como?
Oh, and Lawrence Welk will lead the band.
A one, man, they do.
Oh my gosh.
Anyways, no, we don't have anything else to announce, but we are making headway.
Good.
The board, we talked a little bit before, making headway, so our hope is, in the near future, we might be making some announcements. But according to the very bright one, Mr. Bush, the one we're getting close to for Roadie Fest is gonna be a hit.
Yeah.
Grand Slam, he said.
Yeah.
So, we're good. Okay, is that dragging, we're doing, nah, we're not gonna make it. Special Events Committee, next one will be the tree lighting, the day after Thanksgiving. Who's playing that concert, Mr. Knickerbocker?
If you believe in magic, it would be Loving Spoonful.
Wow, you did listen tonight. Otherwise you would not have known.
No, I just, I woke up for that part of the meeting.
So Loving Spoonful will help us with the tree lighting, looking forward to that. Remember, everything takes place, we're gonna do some extra stuff, book reading, so families come early, here trustees read books to them, we're gonna have a little more events going on.
Student volunteers there to help also with the book reading.
Very good.
Yeah, so.
And we're gonna have Mr. Knickerbocker's twin, the Grinch, he'll be there, so we're all looking forward to that. Who's, who's going first, you or the Grinch, I'm not sure.
It's close, you're having a good night, aren't you?
I'm having a good night.
We're gonna have to talk to his doctor.
Okay. Liquor Commission, no, I don't drink anymore, twenty-eight years, but I sound like I have, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Report from village manager Matt Rome, you've got eight minutes to fill, according to Mr. Bush, go ahead.
I have no report.
I know, but what about the eight minutes to fill?
I'm gonna skip that.
You know what? I want trustee Bush to talk about Edison and Tesla, he can explain all this stuff again, that was interesting.
You just.
They can.
We're talking about the guy that used to burn cats.
Electrocute dogs.
Sorry, same thing.
It's like a game of telephone, I said something three hours ago and now we're burning cats.
Hey, at least we're not eating them, so, we're not Springfield Ohio, so that's good.
Let's get the report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Report for village clerk.
I just want to remind everybody that Elk Grove is an early voting site. It begins on October twenty-first through November fourth. The hours are Monday through Saturday from nine AM to five and Sundays from ten AM to four. If you have any questions, you can contact the village clerk's office.
Could you read off the names of every registered voter in Elk Grove?
But Lori, again, on behalf of the community, thank you, because the reason I come here all the time is the work that you and Jen do to set everything up beautifully, we appreciate that. Because that makes it so convenient, well, vote right here, yeah, during that time, so thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Knickerbocker, anything under there?
I don't think so.
I could have a magnifying glass, not a final thing. Okay, nothing there, any new business items before adjourned tonight? Where's Helen tonight?
Probably in Vegas.
I have one.
Oh, trustee Schmidt?
Yeah, I just forgot to mention that we're finalizing our schedule for our student exchange program. They're gonna be coming here on the eleventh of October through the twenty-first, so we're doing a finalization of our schedule and have more information at the next board meeting.
And they normally come for tree lighting.
Right, but they will be here in November.
But they'll be able to enjoy fall.
Yes, they will.
It'll be beautiful.
When are our kids going home?
They'll be going over there during spring break in March.
Oh, okay.
The end of March.
Thank you. Any other new business items? Public Comment, Mr. Emo Shiao, it's been two weeks since I've seen you.
Have you missed me? Absolutely, everybody's saying, where's the mayor?
Lee actually wrote me a note saying, everyone's worried, are you okay?
Yeah.
I'm trying Joe, I'm trying hard.
You're doing great.
Okay, you'll be there tomorrow?
Yes.
Just checking. And I see Officer Paul Meese out there, he's doing a good job, right? Just, just talking. You know, he's our SO officer.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Many good things.
Keith, anything you want to add tonight?
I have nothing to add.
Nothing, good. Family look good there?
Yeah, there was a lot of candy.
Did they get a lot? Good.
Scott?
Yeah, I'm waiting, I thought he might say something, Scott?
He's good.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing at all?
Nope.
Joe, I don't, I'm gonna leave it in your court.
I think I'm motion to adjourn. Is that legal?
Yeah.
So moved? What do I have to say?
Okay, so we'll leave it up to Joe, Joe again, what do you want?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so then what do I do, George?
You would ask to call for a vote?
Who would I call to do the vote?
Excuse me, I didn't hear the second.
Village clerk?